Let me, let me get them.
Did this, you know that. Call to order our legislative meeting of April the 28th. If everyone could please introduce themselves, that would be great.
Here, Bridgette Jordy, I'm running the public Zoom.
Leslie Herbie, Clerk to the Board.
Alicia Reese, County Commissioner, Vice President of the County Commission.
Good evening, I'm Hamilton County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Michael Freeman, Legal Counsel.
Thank you so much and good evening. I am Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. We will start, it's nice to have a, a nice crowd in the evening. I know why you guys are here for very important items, for sure. We're going to get started as we always do. Let me know if you can't hear me back there with a silent prayer. And then after that, if you could please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous session.
Second. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So we will go straight to presentations. Commission on Women and Girls Annual Recommendations, I will pass it over to Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam President, and welcome to all the folks that are in the audience, particularly the Commission on Women and Girls. This is the culmination of a year's work. This is the annual recommendation meeting where the Commission brings forward recommendations. Just as a little bit of a primer, for those of you that aren't familiar with the Commission, it's 20 women and 10 girls that are working in four different areas, those being pay equity, safety, social mobility, and health and self-identity. And so the recommendations and the presentations will revolve around those topics because that's the, the, the work is split into those four different categories. Mary Mountie, the Program Coordinator, is going to kick us off. But first I want to do just a couple of thank yous. Thank you, of course, to the members of the Commission on Women and Girls. They've worked really hard this year to come up with some really solid recommendations. So for that, I'm, I can't tell you how grateful I am, and I hope it's been a good experience for you. The Steering Committee also helps drive the work. Some of those members are here, so thank you for your work. Mary, of course, has been a, a godsend to the Commission on Women and Girls. She's only been here, what, three years? Mary, I know it feels like three years. It's been like three months or something, I don't know. But she's really, really helped move the ball forward for the Commission, super grateful. And to my colleagues for the support, year after year, for the recommendations that come forward from the Commission. We also have some parents in the audience, thank you all for being supportive. And we have some teachers in the back of the room, thank you all for coming. It's super fun to have some teachers here watching their students do some presentation this evening. So with, without any further ado, one, one last thing. So the process is that the presentation will take place. The recommendations then will follow right after the presentation. And then the administration takes those recommendations and responds to that and says, you know, this is how we could plug that in, this is something that we're going to have to do more research on, you know, whatever it is. But we generally get some kind of response from the administration and then we can then continue to formally act on the recommendations. So that's kind of how things generally roll. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Mountie, who is going to introduce the folks that are doing the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse, and thank you all for allowing us to have the opportunity to present to you tonight. As she said, some really solid recommendations. The work of the Commission starts in August and usually culminates in April. And so we've had a really exciting year. This has been a great opportunity for us to identify needs and gaps of service in our community and then put forth recommendations for some policy changes here in our community to help address those gaps and needs in our community. So thank you again. Our first group that's going to be presenting is Pay Equity, and I will let them come to the days.
Commissioners O'Dumas, Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Dreehouse, I am Lucretia Braxton.
And I'm Audrey Chalfy.
And we are part of the Pay Equity Committee. We are part of the Pay Equity Committee, and it is our pleasure to kick this off. Hopefully I'll push this thing the right way. This is our Pay Equity, oh, oh, okay. This is our Pay Equity Committee members, Lauren Bishop, Hannah Boone, Valerie Boykins, myself, Audrey. Oh, oh, just also let you know the schools the girls go to, Madeira High School. Zakari Rochelle goes to Cincinnati Public Schools. Anna Schmidt goes to Seton High School, and Ashley Thomas.
Nationally, every $1 earned by a white man, women earn anywhere from $0.57 to $0.95, depending on their race. The COVID-19 pandemic has disproportionately impacted women of color when it comes to pay equity. The Hamilton County Pay Equity Commitment will help close gender and race-based pay gaps in Hamilton County by providing employers with specific recommendations to identify and address pay disparities at their organizations.
So this picture right here, we actually had a signing day for the Pay Equity Commitment Pledge. And this is actually the culmination of the work of what the Pay Equity Committee Committee has done over the years. And this is it right here, this is a result. So we had over 40 organizations sign that day, and we're looking forward to having more join us with the Pay Equity Commitment. So Hamilton County, these are the recommendations or the resolution that we have, which is that Hamilton County should continue to analyze its own pay practices to identify and address any disparities. Distribute the Pay Equity Commitment to other employers in the county, as well as vendors who work with the county. And publicly recognize other employers who have signed the commitment.
Our recommendations for the next Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls when it comes to pay equity is to explore ways to educate women and girls on pay equity and empower them with negotiation strategies. And also encourage or require employers in Hamilton County to provide pay ranges and job postings.
We thank you for your time, Commissioners, as we present to you the Pay Equity Resolution and Recommendations. Do you have any questions for us? All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next committee to present will be our Social Mobility.
Hello, everyone, I'm Andrea Bertles.
Lucy Becker, I go to Seton High School.
Matt Brunz.
And we are members of the Social Mobility Committee. We also were joined by the work of Carrie Bloom, Ryan Dupree, Shawnee S. Lewis, and Saran Tafara, who's a student at Anderson High School. And our initiative for this year was to advocate for homeless and home insecure minor-aged mothers and families. When we started doing this research at the beginning of this year, we found that there were few supportive housing options in greater Cincinnati for teen mothers and their children. And this presented an opportunity for us to continue the work of previous Social Mobility Committees that focused on housing. 3,000 teens in Hamilton County have babies each year, and 35% of all minor-aged parents in Hamilton County are homeless or home insecure with their children. We discovered that once teens deliver their babies, they're, and they want to remain with their children and they're homeless or home insecure, there are few supportive options. And repeatedly, key agencies told us there's an urgent need, but a gap in reaching these teen mothers with resources that might be available. They're up against legal rights, restrictions on their legal rights because, you know, as teens, they can't sign leases or access childcare vouchers or even make sometimes their own medical decisions. And there's no current right to legal counsel in eviction cases in Hamilton County, like there was implemented in Cleveland in the last couple of years. We also found and learned about the generational impact on, on families and the tri-state economy of teen pregnancy. Children of teen parents are more likely to become teen parents themselves. And one high school dropout alone can cost taxpayers approximately $292,000 over their lifetime. So our focus was on how can, in the short term, the teen parents get greater access to understand the resources that are available to them and meeting them where they are, including access to continuing education. And that led to our resolutions, which Lucy will take you through.
Our first resolution is Housing Resources and Awareness for Minor Mothers and Homeless Families. We recommend that the county adds housing resources in the form of links. For example, teenparentresources.org is an existing resource that the county uses, as well as emergency contacts and crisis, crisis suggestions to the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls website. We also recommend that the county develops a very public marketing campaign with a QR code, as the one shown on the presentation, in order to make the website accessible to the teen parent demographic. This could be in the form of business cards, window clings, or posters on the back of public restroom stalls. Or this could be a resource offered in schools. We also recommend that the Commissioners encourage Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority to prioritize housing applications for pregnant teens or their caregivers. Additionally, we recommend that the county empowers law enforcement in the county to share resources and contact information for support with teen parents that are involved in domestic calls. Our second resolution is the right to legal counsel for family eviction cases. We recommend that the county works with American Rescue Plan to get funding in order to provide the right to legal counsel in eviction cases, specifically for low-income tenants with children. This was actually done in Cleveland, and it's estimated that it saved the city 1.9 million, and 93% of clients avoided eviction or an involuntary move, and 83% of clients who wanted rental assistance were able to obtain it.
And a few thoughts for the next Social Mobility Committee. As a second-year member of our team, we continue to be so appreciative of the good work being done every day by individuals in our community to support our most vulnerable children and to help them thrive and grow. We see that the links to the Hamilton County Commission's website and a public-facing awareness campaign as ways to amplify not only the community's good work, but also the Hamilton County Commission's public voice, connecting teen mothers and families to the critical resources and services they need. Building on our committee's previous work, we also recognize the importance of continuing to raise awareness of homelessness within the community at large. Conversation with those on the ground doing this work will continue to be central to informing this committee's initiatives. We believe that expanding emancipation rights for teen mothers is an avenue that deserves further investigation. By nurturing influential partnerships, this Commission can help us continue to create initiatives that can move the needle towards the goal to end homelessness. Because as we all know, a stable home is the essential foundation necessary to put all of our neighbors and their children on a path towards a much brighter future. On behalf of our team, we want to thank the Commissioners for your consideration of our resolutions and for this opportunity to serve our community in such meaningful ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up will be our Safety Committee.
Everyone, thank you so much for coming. My name is Aditi Pershotaman. I am a senior from the Seven Hills School, and I've had the pleasure to work with some amazing committee members in our Subcommittee, Anne Newair, Mary Gartner, Daisha Darby, Julia Polley, and Lindsay Woodard. So I want to start off with a quote that an 11th grader student wrote. She said, "I now have the confidence to stand up for myself in situations where I may previously not have done." In Tina Croucher Act, which prevents dating violence, a news story. So in March 2022, there was a tragedy in Hamilton County in which a 20-year-old male was charged with killing his 17-year-old girlfriend. So can these types of tragedies be prevented if young people in Hamilton County have access to robust, safe, safe dating programs that focus on preventing gender-based violence? And the Tina Croucher Act, also known as House Bill 19, was implemented in Ohio in 2010 and requires public schools to educate students about preventing dating violence. And are safe dating programs effective? And here are some stats from Women Helping Women, which offers one of several local safe dating programs, and they conduct surveys after its training in local high schools to evaluate its impact on awareness, knowledge, skills, and behavior shifts. 97% of students report they feel confident identifying signs of healthy and unhealthy relationships. 95% of students feel confident setting boundaries with a dating partner. 89% of students feel confident using bystander intervention strategies to intervene in harmful situations. And 93% of students feel confident identifying stereotypes and power differences that could lead to teen dating violence.
Hi, I'm Anne Newair, and I work with the Safety Committee. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about our background here. Our Safety Subcommittee, we first began researching this project, and we learned that most of the information we found was addressing adult women, and there was much less on high school girls. So we decided to focus on what's happening with high school girls. And in our research, we learned that 57% of teens report having friends who have experienced dating violence, and 33% do not tell anyone when they are in an abusive relationship. Also, about 26% of all females report first experiencing partner violence before the age of 18. So with those sobering statistics, we recommend that various school boards in Hamilton County adopt and implement safe dating programs in accordance with the Tina Croucher Act into their curricula as a matter of policy. And as part of this effort, we recommended the Hamilton County Commissioners work with school leaders in our area high schools to strategically grow access to safe dating programs in accordance with the Tina Croucher Act. We got a lot of our wonderful data from Women Helping Women and from other organizations. And as part of our reach out to Women Helping Women, they did submit this statement, and I think it's, it's worth listening to. They want to get more access to students. And it says, "It does not make sense to us that our agency should respond only to unseen after violence. Rather, we must show up in the classroom to invest in our young people." So all we were asking for is structural and strategic access. And now on to our resolutions.
Hi, my name is Daisha Darby.
Oh. Okay.
Yep. So again, my name is Daisha Darby. As a former Ohio Certified Prevention Specialist, I used to also go into high school. So just like Women Helping Women, there are many programs that you all can take a look at to put in the county to help gender-based violence. So be it resolved that Hamilton County, I mean, sorry, that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners support outreach to all public high schools in Hamilton County about the importance of implementing House Bill 19, which is Tina Croucher Act, which educates students on gender-based violence and recommends that they put forth as best practices. Also, be it resolved that you support the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls as they present to public school boards in Hamilton County to act as a bridge between the school board and organizations that provide programs designed to prevent gender-based violence in accordance with the Tina Croucher Act. Also, be it resolved that you support the recommendations for future members of Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls to continue promoting this initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least is our Health and Self-Identity Committee.
I, I'm Mercedes Briggs, and I am 11th grader at Seton High School.
My name's Rebecca Brown.
And I'm Addison Curb from Walnut Hills High School.
We have two initiatives that we are speaking before you today, and it is on menstrual health and mental health. Our other committee members that helped us graciously are Paula Bremer Heager, Janine Gage, Paula Lampley, Elena Tucker, and Mary Weinberg.
Menstrual equity. The research that we did focused on three key areas. The first was gender discrimination, and we want equity regardless of gender. So making sure in order to have an equitable society, we have to have affordable, accessible, and quality menstrual products. The current legislation is more gender biased by exclusion. The second area we looked at was health and hygiene. So menstrual products should be considered as basic as soap and running water. Menstruation is the biological norm for half of the population at some point in their lifetime. We are all a product of menstruation. Basic hygiene needs are as simple as toilet paper, soap, and menstrual products. There are long-term consequences for physical and psychosocial health issues when there is, when, I'm sorry, excuse me, when there's a barrier to access to products. And the third area that we looked at was cost. No one asks what the toilet paper budget is. It can cost a woman over $6,000 in her lifetime, and that number increases when menstruation and access to products is not easy. No one should have to choose between food, medicine, rent, and menstrual hygiene. And it's difficult to quantify the actual cost of absenteeism, disruption, and productivity loss when women and menstruators don't have access to products.
We have two resolutions for menstrual equity. And resolution number one is period products in public and private restrooms. Address menstrual equity to expand access to period products and menstrual health education for all menstruating bodies and their support systems across Hamilton County through encouraging public and private entities serving the greater populace to provide free menstrual products and restrooms. Our second resolution is to convene Menstrual Equity Task Force. Convene a task force in partnership with this Commission and Girls' Health Period, composed of community organizations, stakeholders, and individuals dedicated to reducing menstrual inequities and associated stigmas, to collaborate and raise access, affordability, availability, and sustainability of menstrual health products and menstrual health education across the county.
Second section is about mental health. Recent data reflects the catastrophic events of a global pandemic. Low-income households have been linked with poor health and increased risk for psychological disorders that can persist across the lifespan. The prevalence of poor mental health is high across students of all sex identities and racial and ethnic groups. 37% of students report experiencing poor mental health during the pandemic, and 44% experience persistent sadness or hopelessness. These issues have reached myself and many of my peers. Positive mental health increases success across a lifetime and the chance to improve lives in the communities by reducing risk of comprehensive health problems.
So our mental health recommendations are in two resolutions. The first is to designate ARPA funds to support mental health. Devote American Rescue Plan Act funds to increase mental health resources and support to existing agencies and programs across Hamilton County. A portion of these designated funds will be allocated specifically for combating the issues of mental health in youth and teens across the county. Resolution two is to convene, oh, I'm sorry. Resolution two is the wrong one up there. But the second resolution is to recognize a Mental Health Wellness Day in March and to try and make that a regular event every year. So that event would specifically highlight the mental health of teens in the county, and those, the celebrations and, and awareness would center around teen mental health. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present. At this time, I think we would ask that the resolutions be presented, or are there any questions from the Commissioners before we move to another part of the agenda?
No questions, just comments as it relates to all the hard work that has been done by all of you in the room. And parents, I know, have been supportive, and the older ladies have been supportive to the younger ones. So certainly appreciated. I think the items that were suggested, pay equity, social mobility, safety, and health and self-identity are, are just great items and very necessary for us to deal with. The recommendations were thorough. You were creative and thought outside the box as you looked at recommendations. And we will be looking at those resolutions in a, in a minute. We have not decided how much money will be budgeted, but due to the fact that our budget looks pretty good right now, we should be able to allocate some sufficient funds to be able to follow through on these suggested items. So thank you so much for bringing it before, before me. I appreciate the hard work. Commissioner, Vice President, Alicia.
Thank you and welcome. Thanks for being here. Let me just say that I want to thank Commissioner Dreehouse. Before I got here, she started this commission. And since that time, it's gone from And since that time, it's gone from, we actually have a staff person that's committed to this. And I want to say that these recommendations are great, but let me say, a lot of times we do recommendations that they don't happen. But this commission, our Hamilton County Commissioners, we have really taken these recommendations into consideration and put them to action. The Equity Day, and I know that was one day, and I was just telling Mary about this. I said, you know, this was huge. This was historic. This is historic. And the Commission on Women and Girls is something you should be extremely proud of. Major corporations, major nonprofits, government entities coming together to sign a commitment for pay equity where women will get equal pay for equal day's work. We've moved from a motto to action. And so while we are moving forward with the other recommendations, I just want to highlight what really just happened in Hamilton County, led by the Commission on Women and Girls. You deserve a big round of applause for that. Well, this is a serious commission, and you're doing serious work. And it's a historic time for us to be up here. It's three elected women in Hamilton County. And having your input and then changing it for other women who may be too afraid to ask for what they deserve or don't know how to negotiate their worth. And I just think we took a lot of that off the table, and other companies, nonprofits will begin to follow. We are putting it in the DNA of Hamilton County, and Hamilton County is better for that. So I'm excited about it. As we talk about mental health and teen pregnancy and making a better place for everybody to be able to participate, that is critical. And we have been very active in our ARPA dollars. We put some money, especially toward teen suicides. They're too high. We want them to go away. So yeah, very excited about your work. I want to thank you. I just want to let you know you're not wasting your time. You're making an impact. We hear you, and we're moving forward. And we have a major, major win that just happened last week, a major win. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So thank you all. Thank you for the presentation. Very well done and very well, it's a great synopsis for so much work that's really gone into the recommendations. I do want to recognize that there are some alum in the room, and these recommendations build upon much of the work that has gone before. We've had a few iterations of the Commission on Women and Girls, and year after year, we just continue to build upon and make stronger the recommendations that are the foundation, really, of the Commission on Women and Girls. Pay Equity is a very good example of a resolution that came forward a couple of years ago, and we finally got to the meat of it, got it on paper, were able to do some outreach in the community, and he had a pay equity commitment signing day. So it is a culmination of years of work from this commission. So thank you also to the alum and the current members who are here. So as you can see, there are a lot of research went into the recommendations. They're very thoughtful, and I think you all should be very proud of your work. So with that, Madam President, with your deference, I would like to move the resolutions to the top if there are no more questions or comments. So we have the recommendations and the resolutions on the consent agenda. They are numbers nine through 14. And with your permission, I will read them by title only, and then we can vote individually on the recommendations. That's okay. All right, very good. So number nine is the resolution directing the administration to distribute the Hamilton County Pay Equity Commitment. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
The next resolution, I'll move to approve of the resolution supporting the right to legal counsel for family eviction cases in Hamilton County.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. The third resolution, I'm going to move to approve of the resolution supporting housing resources and awareness for minor mothers and homeless families in Hamilton County.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to move to approve of the resolution supporting resources to prevent gender-based violence and harassment.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to move to approve of the resolution supporting mental health in Hamilton County.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And the last resolution, I'm going to move to approve of a resolution supporting menstrual equity in Hamilton County.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you to the commission.
So I want to remind everyone, there's a reception that can be ongoing. We did have a little reception before the meeting, which led to the energy in the room, I think, maybe. A lot of sugar and caffeine in the room, so please retire to that room and grab something on your way out. Thank you all.
Let me just make an announcement if I can, because I was going to talk about it when we did our comments, but I was on a White House briefing earlier today, and the federal government has allocated $1 trillion for seven primary agencies. So if you're looking for jobs in agriculture, commerce, DHS, environmental protection, transportation, FEMA, just get on bil.usajobs.gov, and they need many, many people. So I just wanted to let you know that. Okay? All righty, okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Good season. All right, you're so welcome.
Still not working?
But I'm going to go up here.
All right.
Yeah, so.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Megan Gottsman. I'm with the Addiction Response Coalition, and so I am here to introduce a group of Xavier University Philosophy, Politics, and the Public Honors students. So as part of their Public Policy Practice course this spring semester, these students spent the semester gathering different policy research and advocacy recommendations around pre-arrest diversion and deflection. So this research occurred at the local, state, and federal levels. So after a semester-long deep dive and a trip to Washington, DC, the students are here to bring us and present their findings to HCARC and the Board of County Commissioners. So with that, I'm excited to see what recommendations they have for us. So I'm going to turn it over to them. They're going to do a little bit of a shuffling to introduce all of themselves, and then we'll kick off the presentation.
All right, thank you so much for your time. My name is Andrew Tordi, and I'm from Long Island, New York.
My name is Morgan Gerlick, and I'm from Columbus, Ohio.
I am Walid Abdul-Majid, and I'm from Cincinnati, Ohio.
Hi, my name is Lucy Potter, and I'm from Louisville, Kentucky.
Hi, my name is Tyler Clifton, and I'm from Atlanta, Georgia.
Hi, my name is Faith Craina. I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Hello, my name is Ashley Finley, and I'm from San Diego, California.
Thanks again for taking the time to meet with us today. So over the course of the three months, we've been able to research the topic of pre-arrest diversion in Cincinnati, Columbus, and Washington, DC. And in those three areas, we've been able to meet with elected officials, nonprofits, and researchers to learn more about this topic. We've come to grasp that this topic is the process of directing individuals from the criminal justice system and directing them towards case management programs. Diversion programs come in many different forms, but the ultimate goal is to better treat mental illness and addiction and to lower recidivism rates and overcrowding in jails. As you know, jail can be a very traumatizing experience for many, especially for those who have mental illness. Those who are incarcerated often face barriers in finding jobs and employment and housing and face psychological factors. So our goal is to keep those who commit nonviolent crimes and low-level offenses out of jails and prisons. Diversion programs not only benefit the participants, but also save taxpayer dollars and promote public safety. So to your right, as you can see on the graph, in 2017, there were 570 overdose deaths. And the year after that, in 2018, Hamilton County started to implement more pre-arrest diversion programs, such as the Quick Response Team, QRT, and the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, known as LEED. After these were implemented, deaths went down over 100 to 468 in 2018. They did not continue to rise back to the same number they were in 2017, but we still see that overdose deaths are a cause for concern. 25 counties have reported record-high overdose deaths in 2021, but Hamilton County saw a drop between 2020 and 2021.
So Hamilton County has been better able to treat the addiction crisis better than any other county in Ohio. And the reason as to why is because the county has been more focused in investing time and energy and money in addiction and mental health services and also pre-arrest diversion programs. After our meetings in DC and also after extensive research on the matter, we've concluded that Hamilton County is a leader throughout the entire county, throughout the entire state of Ohio, in deflection, and has developed three ways to continue to be a model for the entire country. The first way, as you can see on the slides, is to create an office of deflection and to continue to invest in pre-arrest diversion programs and also the pilot programs. The second way is to further invest in mental health services and resources and addiction services and resources. And the third and final way is to prioritize and better the relationship between the Hamilton County Services and the Greater Cincinnati area.
Hamilton County has already invested a lot of important time and resources into pre-arrest diversion, but overdose deaths remain high. One area of improvement would be to create an office of deflection. So this would be similar to the Office of Reentry, but would relate to pre-arrest diversion services. It would operate under the county administration and be housed in the Hamilton County Justice Center. Or Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion currently operates out of the Office of Reentry, but we believe there needs to be a permanent deflection department where pre-arrest diversion pilot programs can operate out of. This department would oversee pilots that are already occurring in Hamilton County while also introducing and facilitating multiple new pilots. On a day-to-day basis, it would work with existing services like the Quick Response Team, the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, the Mental Health and Drug Courts, and the Hamilton County Mental Health Recovery Services Board to set and execute deflection procedure. One thing we have learned when speaking with experts in DC and Hamilton County is that pre-arrest diversion services often function separately, but the system works best when all the different moving pieces are working together. As a result, it is important that Hamilton County continue to allow all of these pieces to work together. So the Office of Deflection would provide a single point where all these different parts, whether it's collaboration with the Mental Health and Drug Courts or pilot programs, can operate out of. Ultimately, the Office of Deflection would allow more time, money, and resources to be devoted to pre-arrest diversion in Hamilton County. It would also create consistency and set a standard for how pre-arrest diversion would operate. This will allow all the different parts to work together more effectively.
So we believe that this proposed Office of Deflection could run on a budget of $625,000 per year. We base this number on our current understanding of the QRT budget, and we base this because it operates in many of the same functions, overseeing a lot of the same responsibilities. So this would mostly be comprised of personnel. It would, these personnel would be overseeing the one-to-two pilot programs and also the deflection already occurring in Hamilton County. The $625,000 would go to about 550 for personnel, $5,000 for supplies, $15,000 for equipment. Data collection and evaluation done by the University of Cincinnati would cost about $50,000, an additional cost of $5,000. This money could come from the One Ohio Opioid Settlement dollars. These dollars have two pots. The first is direct allocation funding, which is $12 million, and the second pot is a regional Hamilton County and Cincinnati pot fund that is $36 million. This means that Hamilton County is being allotted $48 million to address addiction and mental health. We believe that $625,000 of this fund should be directed to the Office of Deflection. There could also be federal grants, temporary federal grants allotted to pilot programs that could allow them to operate outside the $625,000 budget. And as we've seen with LEED, pilot programs give so much information, valuable information, that we can learn more about deflection. So if we continue to operate new pilot programs, we would be able to learn more and operate deflection more successfully with more resources, especially under a permanent Office of Deflection. When we were in DC, we spoke with the leader of the Stop Addiction Fatality Epidemic, or SAFE, and she talked about many different pilot programs happening in other jurisdictions and across the country that Hamilton County could implement, but they have not already. And these are two of those.
So there are five deflection pathways, and Hamilton County is already implementing two of these, naloxone plus through the QRT, and officer-led deflection through LEED. We believe that we could implement these other three deflection pathways through various pilot programs. Two examples are listed above here, the Angel Program in Gloucester, Massachusetts, and the Arlington Outreach Initiative in Arlington, Massachusetts. Both were created in 2015 but serve different purposes. The Angel Program is a program where if an individual comes to the Gloucester Police Department and turns in their drug paraphernalia, specifically an individual who suffers from a substance abuse disorder, then these police officers will take them to rehabilitation facilities and give them the help that they need, as well as give them an angel, an angel who sponsors them through their detox. They also give the individuals nasal Narcan, which is funded through drug dealers' money that has been seized. This program helps decriminalize addiction, which is one of the main goals of pre-arrest diversion, and helps to create a better relationship between police and these individuals. The other option is the Arlington Outreach Initiative, which was also created in 2015. This works as an active outreach pathway, and this helps for people who also suffer from addiction, mainly focusing on the opiate and heroin addiction. Most of the time, when a drug dealer or trafficker is arrested, the police are left behind with a list of names. Through this program, working with public health officials and with the police officers, they go through and they contact the names on these lists. They also are able to contact these people's families if available. This way that they can reach out to people to give them proper education about where they can find treatment and help them find resources for better rehabilitation. So that leads us to our second recommendation. A key aspect of pre-arrest diversion is not just the programs itself, but also all of the mental health and addiction resources that surround them. This includes mobile crisis teams, mental health hotlines, rehabilitation facilities, and other treatment options. The Office of Deflection would work closely with these resources and rely greatly on their services. As a result, for pre-arrest diversion to be successful in Hamilton County and to better be able to lower overdose deaths, it is important that the county not just prioritize these programs, but also invest in the success of the services around them. Another step for Hamilton County is to prioritize the relationship between Hamilton County and the Greater Cincinnati area. Many pilot programs operate out of surrounding police jurisdictions and involve the collaboration between Hamilton County and police forces. As a result, it is important that the county builds up its own services and provide cooperation with surrounding districts. The county must also continue to focus on community-oriented policing and its programs. The general consensus in the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office is that deflection is successful and effective. Law enforcement, both in Hamilton County and surrounding areas, is crucial to the success of pre-arrest diversion programs.
So in summary, what we're asking for is for Hamilton County to create an official to create an official Office of Deflection and to invest in the pilot programs that are already being existed to handle this issue. We want to invest in alternatives to incarceration that would continue to build up addiction and mental health services that we have here that the people in this county truly need. And at the same time, we also want to prioritize the relationship between the, the Hamilton County and the jurisdictions that are within it, because without the proper collaboration and cooperation, we won't be able to get the results that we need and be able to help the people as we should.
Thank you so much for your time, and we will now take any questions that you have. Yeah, so, um, my understanding is that, you know, through their sophomore block class, they get to pick a policy issue. So they picked the issue, and then as they were going through their research, they've met with a variety of different, um, Hamilton County, um, as well as State of Ohio people that are in the, the deflection space, reached out to the Addiction Response Coalition to see what, learn more about what we were doing in the space, um, and then brought forward their recommendations at the end of the semester. Um, we, we were tasked with moving, sorry. We were tasked with moving a policy forward, and in, while we were doing that, while we were learning, while we were seeing what we believed should happen in Hamilton County or just anywhere it could happen, we thought that this was something that should happen, and that's why we're making that recommendation. Yeah, so traditionally, it's also been known as pre-arrest diversion. They call it DPAD, um, deflection and pre-arrest diversion. But more often, they've adopted this term of deflection, because it both encompasses catching people before they get into the system and also using the diversion for, for instance, arrest diversions, so that they're holding that citation in abeyance, so that they go to treatment. So it sort of is an all-encompassing term for all different types of, they mentioned the five pathways, um, and it's sort of a term that encompasses all five of those. Yeah, so currently, the LEAD program is operated between the Addiction Response Coalition and the Office of Reentry. So our LEAD case managers are Office of Reentry employees.
Yeah, I want to say, um, thank you so much for, uh, this presentation today. And, um, I think it's a pretty good time, because we're looking at, uh, we haven't gotten the money, I don't think, yet, but we have to put together, uh, the One Ohio, and, you know, what's, what's the best way? What are some of the new things that are happening? What are the needs? Um, and so I think it's a good time to, to take a look at this. What I'd like, though, is to get more, I know this is just a PowerPoint. I know you have a more in-depth, uh, component, and there were some areas, like the, uh, pilot programs that you named, wanted to see what, you know, they were in 2015, what was the results of them, how many people did they serve? Uh, how many people actually came in and said, I guess, the Angel Program, I believe? How many people actually came in the Angel Program and said that they wanted, uh, the help voluntarily? Um, so I think since, since it's been around since 2015, we might be able to get some more data on that. If there was a pilot program, if there are some things that they would change, because I know 2015 is 2022, uh, what would be those things? I think all of that information is critical. Uh, we are, uh, we are committed. We're always looking for new ways, uh, to help, uh, fight the addiction issues. And so I know our quick response teams, and we've kind of been on the cutting edge, as you said, in terms of Hamilton County, we want to stay on the cutting edge. We want to stay ahead of it. We still, even though we're doing better than, uh, most places, other counties, we still have a, a major need. We're still learning, and soon as it looks like we're learning and ready to fight a certain addiction, something new comes out. Um, and so we have to be able to, uh, you know, stay up with the time. So I think we're all open for those ideas. I think this is a, a good time, this is good, but I'd just like to get more, um, if there's a copy, we can all get, more of your in-depth numbers, what you saw, what these programs actually did, uh, what are some opportunities in these, you know, this, these programs? Um, I think it'd be good to put on the table, um, you know, as we're looking holistically, uh, on this. And then we want to look at our reentry office and what's happening there, and what's happening with the Office of Deflection? How, uh, what do they do? Would, would this be doing? Um, I also would like to know, did you talk to our drug court judge? Did you ever get a chance to meet with her?
We didn't. Uh, we met with Gary Yurdevak, who's the Program Director for Specialized Dockets in Hamilton County. So he oversees both the Mental Health and the Drug Court. So we did have the chance to kind of talk to him and see what kind of work they're doing, but we didn't get to meet with a judge from one of the courts.
Yeah. One thing I would recommend, I know you presented to us. Um, I would recommend having a meeting, uh, trying to schedule something with Judge Sanders, uh, to present this, because she also is, uh, we weigh very heavily on her recommendations. She's looking to do some new things, uh, some innovative things, and I just think this would be a, a good opportunity for her to see your presentation as well. Um, that would be another recommendation that I would make.
That's great. I will say the Addiction Response Coalition, as well as the QRT, currently partners with Drug Court on a pilot over there, um, that we've been doing. So the Addiction Response Coalition is actively working with Judge Sanders at the moment to really expand the services that her court is offering.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. It's a pleasure to see students, more students, uh, at our meeting. So, and thanks for, thank you for the thoughtful presentation. Um, I have one question related to the Office of Deflection. Were we to set up something like that? Um, I know that there's a nexus with reentry, but it's not, reentry is, as people re-enter the community, deflection is trying to keep them out of the system to begin with. And so I wonder if we were to do something like that, would it be your recommendation to house that in reentry? Or is it, have you thought through, um, maybe a different, maybe it's a standalone? Or it is a nexus to a different department or not, or you continue with reentry? I mean, did you kind of think through different options as you were thinking about the recommendation?
Yeah, so we were thinking it would function very similarly to the Department of Deflection, but be its own standalone, and, um, focused on deflection, because reentry is the, the opposite side of it. So while they could work together, it would be something separate. So it could be focused on the prior-to-arrest and the pre-arrest diversion and deflection, as opposed to the, the af, the after.
And I will add to that, I think, one aspect of pilot programs that is really helpful and that we've seen with LEAD, um, I think LEAD has been very successful and has given us a lot of great information. It does operate out of the Office of Reentry right now, and we think that one area for improvement, were we to implement another pilot program that's kind of similar, uh, would be just to give it more time and funding, because the Office of Reentry does deal with different services. Pilot programs related to pre-arrest diversion, instead of reentry or corrections, uh, don't have as much of an opportunity to get off the ground. So we think if there were to be an Office of Deflection that would oversee one or two ongoing pilots at a time, it would just allow those to have more time and funding to be successful.
Yeah, and I think, I do think the interesting, uh, the timing's interesting as well, because, uh, the, the funding will be coming eventually from the state. Um, and we, we will be looking for recommendations as to how to invest that money. So, um, yeah, point taken. Uh, so thank you for the work, and thank you for, um, spending so much effort and trying to understand what's going on in Hamilton County, uh, where we are and how we can do better. So thank you for that.
Number one, just wanted to also thank the, the students for the presentation. I thought it was really, really good work, um, and very impressed by the, the depth of the analysis on this. I mean, I've seen a lot of, of undergraduate presentations come through that hit things at a very high level, and just really impressed by the, the, the detail that you went into and, and understanding the different facets and, and, and areas of, of county government, from the courts to the Justice Center, to the Department of, of Reentry, and how the, the funding works and, and the opportunities for the funding. So I want to, want to thank you for that, congratulate you, uh, for that. I do think, um, as we talk amongst, uh, the administration to the board, um, a lot of things that they have mentioned line up well, actually, with some of the things that we are contemplating already. As the board knows, we're doing a little bit of restructuring, uh, up on this floor, uh, to focus a little bit heavier on social programming and criminal justice, uh, things that, that lead to the co, uh, coalescing of some of these things in a more strategic way. Um, as was, was said in the presentation, obviously, we are, I think Hamilton County has carved out a niche for itself as a, as a home and a champion of pilot programs in this regard. We do have the opportunity for the One Ohio program funding coming, both the direct allocation, as well as the foundation funding. So I think, um, the administration's happy to take these recommendations, work with Megan, work with Lisa, um, put a little thought into how we can, um, uh, take a look at whether we can move forward on something like this, what it would take to do that, and, um, and then get back to the students through, uh, through Megan and Lisa. But, uh, just want to thank them for their, for their effort. I thought it was a really good presentation.
Just wanted to, uh, just kind of follow up on that. We are developing, um, hopefully quickly, we are developing a paid internship program and a fellowship program. And as, uh, our administrator talked about, the, the quality of the presentation, uh, this possibly could be something that the students could continue to see it through, uh, helping to work on this. But, uh, outside of that, I just want to let you all know, when we get ready to post that, we're looking for some good paid interns this summer. Uh, so please, we'll get that, we'll make sure we get that information out, because the quality of the work that you all have presented, uh, is very, very good. And I know when I was in college, I was always looking for the paid internship. So I just wanted to let you know that. So put that on your calendar, we're going to get that to you right away. In fact, our HR director's right there, you put his hand up. Don't leave until you get his card, you know, all the way out, so you can bug him, uh, you can bug him to death. Uh, so I just wanted to say that. And lastly, I know we're dealing with the political and philosophy group, but Xavier University, I just want to thank you for the level of your work. I want to thank Xavier, uh, who, uh, we really commend. Xavier's one of our higher education institutions here. And I just want to say, it didn't get enough publicity, it didn't make the front page, but Xavier did win the NIT and are the NIT champions. So I want to say congratulations again, thank you.
Public comments is next on our agenda. Michelle Heiss.
Hi, Commissioners. Hi, I come even at night. Um, so I noticed that usually, um, the pattern is before a resolution is passed that there's public comments before the resolution's actually passed, and I noticed that didn't happen this evening, um, that it moved right along. And so I did indicate on my card to speak on Resolution Number Nine before it, it got passed. So I did want to make a note of that, that I did not get a chance to speak on that. Um, I'm really excited for these young ladies and what they're doing and what this means for the county. I do hope that our employer, the employer that I work for, um, I am here as a citizen of Hamilton County, but I also am employed at Hamilton County Job and Family Services. And so I do hope that my employer signs that commitment for pay equity. But I would like to, uh, read the quote that's on page five in that report. Closing the pay gap, I'm sorry, give you an opportunity to get there. Closing the pay gap doesn't just benefit women, it also benefits the entire economy. If women were paid fairly, the poverty rate could be cut in half, and an estimated $512.6 billion could be injected into the US economy, according to the Institute for Women's Policy Research. And I think that's really, really powerful. I have heard the saying that if you bring up the most disenfranchised people, you will bring up everybody, and the most disenfranchised group are black women. So I really do hope that you all listen to the recommendations from these young ladies. Um, and if they go back and watch this, I hope that they use their voice until it is hoarse, until people listen to them, because I am one of those women. You may not want to listen to me, but that does not change the fact that I will still speak. So I hope you all have a fabulous evening, and you all do well. Thank you. Absolutely.
Madam President, may I say that Hamilton County did sign, uh, and we've also done a pay equity study. And the county, as we sat, I think a couple of years ago, was 98 cents on the dollar, uh, women to men. So we've got two cents to go to get to parity, but, uh, the county is committed to the work. But thank you for your comment.
Awesome. I'd just like to reply that that pay equity study did not include frontline workers, it was only managers. So, um, I'm hoping that that does trickle itself down to frontline workers, which is someone like myself. So I look forward to looking at that report, I look forward to working with you all, and I hope that this comes to fruition for all the people at JFS. Have a good night.
Hi, my name is Meredith Pointer. I'm with the Mental Health and Addiction Advocacy Coalition. Um, I wanted to, my, okay, here we go. I wanted to, um, speak today, after, uh, sitting and listening to the, uh, meeting last week about ARPA funding and the recommendations, um, that were, are being considered. And I wanted to thank you all for being able to talk about this and being, uh, invited to, to be, uh, to work with, uh, Mr. Alito with, uh, the Stakeholder Advisory Group on the Behavioral Health Recommendations. From that meeting, I, uh, last week, I, I kind of came back to my office and did a little bit of investigating to think about some of the comments that you all had made on it and some of the recommendations. And I wanted to lift up, uh, three specific, um, points on the recommendations. One is around the Mobile Crisis, uh, Team. And I know that's the largest portion of the eight million that's being considered for mental health and recovery supports. The MAC fully supports the, um, you know, expanding that team to 24/7, uh, which is what that funding was being recommended for. Um, but I also want to lift up the need for mobile crisis services for children. And, and, and that is typically referred to as MRSS, Mobile Response Stabilization Services. Um, and thinking about Ohio Rise, um, which is a initiative through, uh, Ohio Department of Medicaid for, uh, multi-system youth or children with, um, or zero to 20, I believe, uh, that have serious behavioral health needs. Um, and that part of that, part of that initiative is to, to grow the services in the, in the, in the state, but in the region around, um, to be able to serve those, uh, serve those children at their, at their need, the level of their need. Um, and so currently, Hamilton County does not have, oh.
If you can summarize your other points.
Okay. Hamilton County currently does not have MRSS. Counties are, Jason counties do. I do know that the board is working on that, but there is no local funding, and, and the, and the funding that's being issued is not nearly enough to actually in, uh, put out there and cover the cost of MRSS. The other point around this is workforce, regardless of what your investments are, you're, without the workforce, it's going to be wolf, it's not going to happen. I spoke to a, a child, children-serving provider in Hamilton County. Their current waitlist is 1,100 children, 1,100 children. And the workforce doesn't exist. That, this particular provider is, is, um, marketing across the state to try to recruit individuals from other parts of the state. So investment in behavioral health workforce is one great way to invest in children in Hamilton County.
Which provider is it?
Um, they did not give me permission to, to say, they did not give me permission to say publicly who they are, but I can share that offline with you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Janice Lockett.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Dr. Lockett, I'm the Program Chair of Nursing at Cincinnati State. And we're working with the Health Collaborative to increase the number of nurses, to increase the number of nurses entering the workforce. So I am here to just say that increasing that number is not just entry into the program. but also getting the students through the program and out into practice. We have a very diverse population of students, and we know that diversity is necessary to improve patient outcomes in nursing. So I'm just here as the Program Chair, looking at the ARPA grant and speaking on behalf of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Are you what the term?
I am. I did fill out a separate speaking card, Robin Hope's. Yes, yes, I'm the Provost at Cincinnati State, and Dr. Lockett is my colleague. So Commissioner Dumars, Treehouse, and Reese, I appreciate the opportunity just to briefly indicate how supportive we are that the county has allocated funds towards the increase of nursing programs. There are two critical needs in our community. One is the vacancy rate in LPN and RN, patient care in our health systems, our long care facilities as well, our hospitals. So there's, there was a vacancy rate before the pandemic. The pandemic has exacerbated that. It's, we are past the point.
You lifted up, they, you're a little taller than she is.
There we go. Okay, is that better? I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, so the the vacancy rate in terms of patient care, LPN, RN, in our community is, was at a really critical stage prior to the pandemic. It was 11%. It is now tracking closer to 14, 15%. That is at a critical stage. Separate apart from that, the diversity of our nursing workforce in our community is not what it should be. Nationally, less than 5% of the RN workforce are of African-American background. And our community is a reflection of that. Health outcomes suffer if the patient population in a hospital or in a long care facility is not mirrored by the patient care, the RN and PN diversity. If if that is not mirroring, healthcare outcomes suffer. So I think that the county is exactly where they should be in allocating some funds because I think that the PN program, the RN program, Cincinnati State can make a real difference on both of those key crucial needs in the community. Just, and I just wanted to thank you for that, indicate our support.
Well, thank you both so much for coming forward and letting us know we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation today. But Cincinnati State, I think the thing that I wanted to know in terms of is cost a problem for a student, you know, getting in, because we got to get them in and we got to get them out so we can get them into the hospitals. Is cost a problem, or do we have partnerships with hospitals that's offering scholarships? Or I just want to know as we're making our final decisions on the workforce, is it, is it pay? Is it bonus? Is it scholarship? Which one would you say?
So we do have those fundings available. One of the things we need most is to get more educators in so that we can bring in more students. So educators is one. The critical shortage in nursing means that there's a critical shortage in those who can educate the students that are coming in. So that's one part of it. Equipment is another. And being able to bring in the technologies that we need to be able to teach students, not only in the clinical setting, but also in the college setting, so that we can prepare them before they go into the hospital setting. So that advantages them in terms of when they get to the bedside because we need the nurses to, the graduates to come out prepared to take care of patients at the bedside.
Thank you. And is there any use for retirees? You know, right nowadays, you really can't retire, inflation and everything. Is there any incentive for retired nurses to come back and teach, or is that obsolete at this point?
It's not obsolete, but usually by the time the aging, we lost five, for example, five seasoned faculty at the same time. That is very difficult to replace because when you come into the field of academia, you were prepared for the bedside, but the transition into academia takes time, it takes resources, and it takes seasoned faculty to train faculty that are coming in.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. We have Deidra Delvonne.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or excuse me, good evening, everyone. My name is Deirdre Balouin. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for the Health Collaborative, and I'm really excited to be here with you today. The Health Collaborative really brings healthcare leaders together. It could mean them, provide them actual data for the common good. One of our major focuses is healthcare workforce strategy. So I'm here to reiterate the collaboration we have with Cincinnati State for the funding we'll be seeking for the ARPA grant that yours, we will be submitting to you. The Health Collaborative, excuse me, the Health Collaborative's most recent workforce data survey showed a 44% increase in nurse vacancies. That's significantly alarming, and that's from January to June of 2021. We're conducting another survey, and all indications indicate that it'll be significantly higher climb in that vacancy rate. Healthcare is a fat, one of the fastest growing industries for Hamilton County. There's been a 15% increase in the workforce over the last five years. They have wonderful jobs that have lots of advancement, but there aren't enough workers to fill those wonderful jobs. The Health Collaborative is really focused on increasing the size and the diversity of the workforce talent pipeline. The reason why we collaborated with the Cincinnati State is because they have a track record of graduating the most diverse candidates, and they have an excellent passage rate for the required exams. These are qualified candidates. Commissioner Reese, you asked specifically about that support. You'll see in what we're going to be submitting, there is the largest chunk of it goes back out to the participants to support them on their journey to be successful. So stipends, scholarship, mentorship, as they go through the journey for education to become within the pipeline and hired within the nursing workforce. This funding will hopefully increase to provide 100 new nurses and also increase that size of the class from 25 minority representation to over 35%. Those are impressive one-time hits that you guys will have if you fund that grant that we're going to be seeking. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I really appreciate it, and thanks for the work you've done in terms of this creative proposal.
Thank you so much for your comments. Do we have anyone on Zoom? No, no. Thank you all. We will move forward. Comments and motions, and I'm going to go to the podium because I'm not sure if everyone, everyone is hearing. I still don't have the mic. Those that are listening are able to hear me.
Just a couple of comments. Of course, I attended the Land Bank meeting yesterday afternoon, and very informative. The port continues to build townhomes and and other housing efforts that we are, are part of our priority is affordable housing. They continue to do that along with other partners. Today, I just came back just about an hour ago from the reentry conference. I'm used to looking at this. I can't look at you and do it too, so. The reentry conference, it was excellent. We had to leave early. But I say, before I get into that, because that's my main comment. I mentioned earlier about the feds allocated $1 trillion for seven primary agencies. I want to mention that again for those that are listening, under Agriculture, Commerce, DHS, EPA, Transportation, FEMA. If you're interested in any of these jobs, they need many, many people. Peter Bonner is the head of the Office of Personnel Management. You can go OPM.gov, you can go there, or BIL.usAjobs.gov. So I want to talk about the fact that we have spent the majority of our time, which makes sense, talking about the American Rescue Plan, because we don't want to give any monies back. We have until '26 to do that. That's very understandable. But I would say 80, 85% of our meetings have been about allocation of those funds, and that's okay. But what about those who have not been impacted by COVID-19 as relates to their business? Or maybe they could not qualify for some of the grants. What are we doing for those people? I brought up a couple of weeks ago, when we had stopped food waste, we had a proclamation. And I mentioned that we need to do more than just have a proclamation. So when I mention things, I'm really hoping that maybe staff can grab hold of it. How does a county impact this food that's being wasted? Because we know people are going to be at hungry. So I I'm not just bringing it up as a good suggestion. I want somebody to grab onto it and see what we can do about that. Can we get more involved? With the reentry, we know, I have heard and I have read, there is reentry housing necessary for these people that are getting out of jail. They they go to their family or their relatives, and they put them out either because their children live in there. They don't know what they've been through when they were in jail, and they're homeless. So as we look at housing, how can we, and we had said a couple of meetings ago, we may end up being a real estate agent. I don't recommend that, but as we're looking at housing, how do we get housing for these people that are homeless, that have come out and that are trying to do better? We know there's a stigma. People are not hiring them. We talked about the youth and them working, and we know that youth are working in JFS. But what about those that are not involved in JFS? How are we going to get this county program up and running before the summer? I would say that as we talk about all these vacancies, all these county jobs that are open, and we can't find anybody, what about some of the entry people that are begging to work? And they have this stigma, and nobody will hire them. They're afraid of them. Or they, we know when it comes to children, they can't be involved in that. We know when it comes sometimes to healthcare, they can't be involved in that. But look at some of the vacancies. I'm asking the county administration to, and Frank also, to look at some of the vacancies, like Paul Brown Stadium just needs a laborer on the field. Can we give those people a chance to work? They want to work. And so maybe we can remedy some of those vacancies. I know JFS has a lot of them. I don't know what we can do about those. But our county positions, we have thousands of employees and hundreds of vacancies. So let's see what we can, what we can do. Let's see, I'd like to see a plan, okay, to hire those people. We are also, let me see. We talked about the food waste. I guess the bottom line, I'm going to end it because I'm standing up talking. I'm used to sitting down, but any, let me just say this seriously. Let's focus more on those who are not impacted, were not impacted directly by the COVID. Everybody was impacted by COVID-19. But let's focus on the ones that we can help, and and I'm not going to say not focus on ARP. No, we got to get that money out. But let's look at the hiring of some of those reentry people. Let's look at housing for some of those reentry people, and also for the food that's being wasted. How can we get someone to coordinate the distribution of all those foods, food items that are being thrown away? So that was my major focus for this evening, and I will go up because the other two have mics.
Okay, moving right along, Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Wanted to hit, I also attended the Land Bank meeting. Also, we have a bye leave today. I believe it's a bye leave today. I'm not sure. I think it's a bye leave today on the Black Music Walk of Fame. Had a great meeting. We're trying to finalize the design and move forward. Be a great tourist attraction, a great tourism infrastructure project. So I'm looking forward to the interactive components, which is going to make it world-class. And we'll hear in a minute about the bye leave. But I had a really good meeting with the team that's working on this to get us moving forward, keep us on schedule. And I'm just excited about what it's going to end up being. I'm very excited about that. So I had a great meeting today with with them, and I'm down there all the time. So they teased me as the hard hat foreman has shown up. But I'm always down there just looking and bringing people to see it as it's getting formed. Sometimes it's easy to see the end result, but the process, I think, is what makes it exciting. So in fact, one year ago, we just celebrated the anniversary on April 26. We stood out there, had a press conference of citizens who said, why not have a Black Music Walk of Fame? And one year later, it's going up. So encourage people to ride by and see it as it's forming and and moving forward. So excited about that. I look forward to the the bye leave. On Monday, I took a little break, celebrated birthday with my family and very close friends and just really thanking God for another year. We are in a time where we have to be thankful every single day and every moment that we have. So I took a little break to spend time with my family on Monday, so I didn't do a lot of running to events at that time. Also, this week was a big week. We received the assessment presentation for the stadium, Paul Brown Stadium. And I want to reiterate, because we get a lot of questions, a lot of calls. I want to reiterate, my position is that this is an important issue, but it's not the issue. President Dumars just highlighted a number of issues, and certainly there's more. We're still going to, people call, does that mean you're not going to think about us anymore? I'm out here struggling to hold on to my house. I'm one mortgage payment away from losing it all. You know, senior citizens, what do we do? I'm trying to pay for my medicine and pay for my my house, and I pay taxes too. Small businesses out there, I'm paying taxes, and I'm out here trying to survive. You know, COVID hit us hard, and maybe I did get a grant, but you know, it's still hard out here. So I just wanted to reiterate to Hamilton County citizens, I've said this to our administrator, to make sure that we are still moving forward with these important issues to help all the citizens that we can help in Hamilton County. We're still pushing to try to get that gun range out of the area where too many kids are hearing it in in the Lincoln Heights area. We're still going to be pushing. I'm going to be pushing for 30%. We did 30%, I'm going to keep pushing for 30% relief for the homeowner. Still going to continue to push. Like we said, we're going to push to get these ARPA dollars in the right direction with the right ROI to the, to get an infusion back into Hamilton County. We're still going to have a small business office for the first time in history of Hamilton County to help small businesses. We just announced and passed $1.25 million for senior citizens who don't qualify for the ARPA money. They don't qualify because they got a social security check. But Duke Energy, the bill has doubled, and they still need help. And so we have a hotline number, 743-9000, 743-9000. A hotline you can call if you are a senior citizen so we can try to help you because you have paid your fair share, and it's time for you to get an ROI, return on your investment. So we understand that, and we're going to continue to work. And I think our board has done some remarkable work. We are beginning to institutionalize some of these things that need to happen. We want to be number one for small businesses, for small businesses to move into Hamilton County, for the existing small business to expand. We're still going to be focused on broadband. Too many young children could not connect to their education when COVID hit because they didn't have the Wi-Fi. We're going to try to make sure every place in Hamilton County has access, affordable access to broadband and Wi-Fi. We're still working on affordable housing and trying to have not just also programmatic where we can invest, but also some that we can produce, cutting-edge, produce housing to make it affordable. So my philosophy has always been to bring as much outside money to pay so we can reduce the cost on the people who live here. So with that, I want to just reiterate that what we received and talked about on Tuesday was not a complete report. Many of us, I can, I'm not going to speak for everybody else, but I received it 30 minutes before I went in, 200 pages. We're not doing that again because we got to read so we can ask the questions. But that was just the assessment. With a master plan will give us the real numbers, will give us a more realistic view. I know that I have been clear that I can't have Um, I know that I have been clear that I can't have the assessment of repairs without a contract of a tenant. We, the taxpayers, are the landlords of both Paul Brown Stadium and a Great American Ballpark. We're the landlord and landlord ain't fixing up nothing unless they got a tenant. You you all know that that are out here renting. So we want to make sure that those things are talked about together. Uh, and I think the administrator has made that clear. But the master plan that the administrator said will be coming by the end of the year will give us uh, the real, more closely to the real numbers. I also want to say that in there, there are some things that I feel we need to do. One is we gotta get more events in these stadiums that we own. They can't, we can't pay for them three hundred sixty five days and we ain't pay, we not getting none out of them but eight days, ten days and a few days or one season. Uh, I'm moving and asking the administrator, it's in the contract, to report back to our board about looking at what was in the contract, original contract, which is having someone hired that's a professional, Live Nation or someone like that, to get more events in the stadium. Now I said Tim McGraw because I like Tim McGraw. Maybe I was speaking some into existence, it's really Garth Brooks. But Tim, if you out there listening, we need you at a concert here in Cincinnati. But we need more of these type of concerts, Coachella and all of that that's out there. We have the facility and every time we book it, it's a hundred thousand dollars to book. One hundred thousand. We get fifty percent, the taxpayers, that's fifty thousand dollars. So we have to up that immediately. And then also, as we've seen in Tennessee, the NFL putting money in. In Tennessee, seven hundred million dollars of private money that went in and ownership money. And five hundred million came from the state. And they're looking to uh, work with the city to take the repairs off the taxpayers backs. So those are some of the things that obviously I've got a shopping bag full of of questions once we have the master plan and have a better understanding. But I just want people to be assured that this board is working hard every single day, all of, all three of us uh, in this administration, to make sure that you're not forgotten and left behind. On a good note, from a fan side, it's draft day. And I just want to wish the Bengals the best. We wanna, we want to draft the best uh, to add to our our strong team that we had last year. We got close to the Super Bowl and hopefully we make the right draft, we can go ahead and win the Super Bowl. So good luck tonight to the Bengals and draft day uh, that is happening probably, I think, right now or a couple hours from now. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to follow up briefly about the Commissioner Women and Girls. Uh, thank them for their presentation and let the public know that we will be um, opening the application period, uh, probably in mid-March for the next round of the Commissioner Women and Girls. So if there's anybody that's interested in joining the group, um, look for the application on the Hamilton County website. We'll leave it open for about thirty days and close it. And of course, I will reach out to both offices to make sure that um, any recommendations that you all have or any applications um, are received uh, to make sure we've got a nice robust group uh, for the next round of the Commissioner Women and Girls. Mary Mountney just walked in the door, so I'm gonna give you one more. Thank you, Mary. Thank you for all your work on that. It was very good timing. Um, and then um, I also wanted to mention that Candace McGraw, who is the President C E O of the airports over on the other side of the river, um, got recognized last night at the Metropolitan Club for her leadership. And I was able to attend that event. I just wanted to um, say a big shout out to Candace McGraw, who's really doing a fantastic job making sure that our airport is um, all that it can be for the businesses and residents of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to. As we relates to the Gensler report, and so we've all done several interviews as it relates to that. And and as was said earlier, all of that is under consideration. All the uh, the uh, what was given to us, four hundred ninety four thousand assessment. It takes time to review. And um, to their credit though, we did get a little of the information uh, before they uh, dropped the two hundred page pager on us during the meeting. So they did give us something to digest, but we need uh, much more. We need to digest that other two hundred uh, pages. And so we uh, are anxiously awaiting that master plan to see uh, how that impacts that four ninety four. I'm cer- I'm certain that it will impact as we look at other amenities that we might want to have there. But um, I vow to ensure that our residents um, have input in this process and they are able to speak their mind as it relates to uh, what we need to do with the stadium. I know previously, maybe in nineteen ninety six, I don't know if they got all the uh, chance to give all their input as it relates to the stadium, but they will this time. So I wanted to make that uh, public. Um, our commissioner, our commissioner, our county administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so one uh, quick note and then a couple of bye leaves. So just as a note, and this is on the heels of of the conversation we had on um, uh, addiction and uh, diversion and deflection uh, earlier on. I, every two weeks, I give a a presentation uh, to new staff that are coming on to the county. So I meet with them as they're going through the uh, the onboarding process through human resources and and talk with them a little bit about what the county is and get to get them uh, a little bit more up to date on uh, the things that uh, that that they're coming into, the county family that they now belong to, et cetera, as opposed to just their their one department. And one thing I try to promote with with everyone who comes in is making sure that we are uh, as a staff, building a staff with just an incredible amount of expertise that is not only uh, looked to for their expertise within the county, uh, but also nationwide, regionally, statewide, nationwide. And so today, I just wanted to congratulate uh, Megan Gosny, who's here with us uh, today and and Cheryl Miles um, with our lead staff. Uh, they recently got back from Atlanta uh, where they presented uh, at the Prescription Drug and Heroin Summit uh, on leveraging partners to ensure data-driven uh, addiction response. So I just wanted to thank Megan, as we have staff here. Um, I like to tell folks that, you know, we don't, we we of course want you to do your job here and we want you to be an expert here. We want you to bring value to Hamilton County. Uh, but we also want you to be seen as uh, as as leaders in this industry across the country because that brings recognition to the county. Um, and it also, I think, when people look as to where they want to work and they see that if I go to Hamilton County, I can not just do a job, but I can also uh, build uh, myself professionally and the expertise across the country. I think it does good things for for the organization too. So I just wanted to congratulate uh, Megan and Cheryl for their great work down in Atlanta. Um, secondly, just a couple of bye leaves. Um, bye leave number one in your packet, Commissioners. This is actually uh, something we've been waiting on for for quite a while. Uh, this is a resolution approving and journalizing the collective bargaining agreement uh, between the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and the Communications Officers of Hamilton County. So I I just want to thank uh, Frank Spataro, um, Corey Bass, uh, Brett Geary, our outside counsel, uh, but also uh, Andy Knapp out at the the Communication Center, Holly Lampton uh, for their work and uh, our partners uh, in the bargaining unit as well, uh, who worked for quite a while to get to where we are, to get this uh, agreement generalized in a way that should provide some more staffing stability uh, for our employees and our workforce out at the the nine one one center. So uh, with that, Commissioners, I'd recommend approval.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments?
Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to approve by leave one.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas, Commissioner Reeves, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And bye leave two. Uh, this is a resolution approving additional professional planning, design and construction administration services related to Lot twenty eight at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Phil Beck is here. But this is really two contracts, I believe both of them with T H P, correct, Phil?
Correct.
But this can be broken down, four hundred ninety one thousand uh, for public infrastructure uh, to support the interactive elements in the project, as well as one point oh four two million for planning and design of those uh, interactive elements. I believe Phil met with uh, the different office, all the offices over the past two days just to explain the the contract in more depth. But Phil, um, but for transparency sake, if you want to walk the board through this.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Phil Beck, Hamilton County Construction, Construction Executive. Um, yes, there's two parts to this, as Jeff mentioned. One, um, as we've spoken before, I refer to this phase of the banks as almost a layer cake. So um, we have the garage, we have the park, uh, and then we have the interactive elements that are integrated into the park. So um, the first part of this is our, more on the public infrastructure, being able to accept and power up those interactive elements. So all of the behind the scenes coordination, design, um, and uh, providing for the infrastructure, server rooms, transformer modifications, et cetera. And then the second is the actual design of these interactive elements uh, through uh, it's through T H P, but it's the team of uh, D N K Architects, Jack Rousen Associates, as well as Vertical Profit on that team, making that come to fruition. And so what their work will lead to the bidding this summer and then installation.
Said park, some people may think smell park. You're not talking about smell park.
No, ma'am.
So I think we need to be clear on what what we're talking.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, so we uh, this is Lot twenty eight, Phase Three C of the banks at the intersection of Elm and Merron Way. Um, the first step is creating the foundation, which is the garage, if you will, down below. And then on top of that is the park that in this particular lot, this part of the banks is, this is a one hundred percent county-driven project, county-owned, county-paid-for, county-driven. So yes, this is essentially a county park that we are referring to as the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And then within the park will have these interactive elements. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or comments, Vice President Reeves?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. No, I'm uh, I know this is uh, was, is in the budget, so this is just the step to award the contract we had budgeted. Um, so just looking forward to moving and excited about the getting this project up and going.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas, Commissioner Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Could I also say, Commissioner Drehouse mentioned uh, the award for uh, this uh, Candace McGraw of the uh, Greater Cincinnati Northern Kentucky International Airport. And uh, certainly we congratulate her on that, but I do want to give her some credit. Uh, we, this whole project's also about partnerships and we partnered with the airport and they are housing uh, our stars on residency, I guess is the word they call it now. And uh, the the thousands and thousands of people that come through the airport at baggage claim uh, get to see this and they did that with us at no cost. So it's good uh, tourism promotion and and a good partnership. And I just want to thank her and the folks at the uh, airport. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback, people taking pictures, posting it. So I just want to thank her as the first of its kind at the airport. And she's just doing some outstanding uh, different and innovative things at the airport. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Welcome. No further bye leaves, Madam President.
Thank you so much. We move forward to our regular agenda items. I mean, this mic thing is like really messing me up. Okay, um, we have a public hearing.
Thank you, Madam President. Steve Johns with uh, Planning and Development. Uh, a couple of months ago, you might recall, there was a a motion, a resolution put forth by you to support an application to the Ohio Department of Development on behalf of Lydia's House. Uh, Lydia's House is a homeless shelter in Norwood and they're looking to apply for five hundred thousand dollars of state C D B G money for an expansion of that facility. Uh, as part of the application process, O D O T requires us to do two public hearings. This would be the first of those required hearings. So again, make sure that we are allowing for public comment related to this item. Uh, we're looking forward to coming back to you perhaps in May. Uh, we're looking at May twelfth when we'd come back for the second public hearing. Uh, so all we're asking for you is to open the public hearing, see if there's anyone uh, who's interested in commenting on this project, uh, closing the public hearing and then looking forward to the second one I hear in a couple of weeks.
Lydia House is a fairly new um, organization?
Rel- relatively new, that's correct. Yes, maybe in the past ten years or so, yes.
I have to move to open? Okay, well, no further uh, comments.
Just very quickly though, um, just to connect some dots from earlier, we um, with the Women and Girls Commission, uh, Lydia's House, as you said, is a relatively new organization, but it is an organization uh, that looks to to promote housing security for for young, young mothers, giving priority to mothers at eighteen to twenty four. And I think that's one of the things that we heard about um, as a, as a need in the community from the Women and Girls Commission. So just want to say that this fits in with that motif as well.
No further comments. I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Commissioner Summer Dumas, Commissioner Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. We'll see you soon. Okay, Mr. Beck, how are you?
Good evening, I'm doing well, thank you. Um, have several items in front of you this, the the, this evening. Um, the first one, item number one is a resolution authorizing annual geotechnical services, consultant agreements with five different vendors for a maximum of forty thousand dollars per year each. Um, these were done through the R F Q process late last year. Um, it's for um, Atlas A T C, GeoTechnology, S M E, Stan Tech and TerraCon. Funding comes out of the uh, Permissive Auto Tax Fund and it up to a maximum of forty thousand per vendor. This is used for our construction materials testing on our construction projects.
Thank you so much. And I wrote a note on here, multiple firms, and we've talked about trying to spread the money out a little bit. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that on number two, but I was glad to see that. So any additional comments as relates to item one?
Uh, thank you, I just had a question. Multiple years, so I know.
It's it's one year with um, the option for renewals on the second and third.
Awesome, thank you.
Depending on performance or?
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion uh, to adopt item one.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas, Commissioner Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is the uh, award of a bid for the twenty twenty two resurfacing program located in Anderson, Colrain, Columbia, Crosby, Delhi, Harrison Green and Miami Townships, basically spread over the whole county. Um, the roads were Ebenezer, Eight Mile, Forest, Hall, River, Shady Lane, Shepherd Creek, Springdale, Stewart and Wetzel Avenues, uh, for a total of about ten and a half miles of of roadway. These bids were opened on March third. Engineer's estimate was four million one hundred and fifteen thousand. Uh, the low bid was four million two hundred and seventy two thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and sixty five cents. Um, three million of this will be paid out of road and bridge funds and the balance out of permissive auto funds.
Great. Um, so as we look at that four million, my question was um, diversifying the vendors. Um, I know it may take a, you know, there are some small vendors that they're able to do paving. And so I know probably the price would be better if you had one company doing it all. But in the effort of trying to be more inclusive and and I know you are, uh, Mr. Beck, but um, you know, to get some small vendors, not now, you already done this. But I was thinking like um, well, in any of them, Colrain, I don't know. But to to do like you did for number one, uh, the possibility of doing that.
Okay, we'll definitely look at that, yes. Yep, sure.
Yeah, yeah, Madam President, I I would uh, just follow back up on that. I know um, Mr. Beck, you are, you put some things together to have us look at different ways to do some. I would like to get your advice on not just this, but all. If you have reoccurring things, what, from your perspective, that you can maybe recommend uh, to our board on how we can get uh, how we can diversify people in terms of companies being able to get in on a piece of the action, have a relationship with the, with the county, with your department. Um, if that's something that, you know, that would really help us.
I'd be glad to do it. Glad to help any way I can.
Yeah, if you say this is how we do it and then if it's something where we're not advertising it enough or getting it out enough, whatever we can do to help. And it helps with what we're uh, trying to push and what you're trying to push, which is open up that process so that, you know, some people are great because they've been doing business with the county forever. Then there's other people who don't even know the county has business because they just don't know. So just wanted to see, uh, maybe you could get something to us on how we can do. So just wanted to see, maybe you could get something to us on how we can do that to, you know, open up the process more and allow others to participate.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt item three.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. That was actually item two.
Oh, two. Did you write down two?
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item two.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is a resolution allowing us to put out for bid Hopper Road Culvert Replacement Project located in Anderson Township is a replacement of an existing drainage system. Three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars is the engineer's estimate. It will come out of permissive auto fund.
Questions?
I think we already passed it. We already passed it.
What, because I did it ahead of the two? But I thought I had to go in order, so.
Okay, so then we'll go to number four then. Is a resolution to allow us to take out the bid Burning Lane Culvert Replacement. It's because it's late at night, you know, we're running out of energy here. Yeah. Okay, sure. Burning Lane Culvert Replacement Project five oh two one eleven is located in Anderson Township and its existing drainage system replacement on Burning Lane between Five Mile and five ninety-five Bernie. The engineer's estimate is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, and that will again be funded out of permissive auto.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions? So here we go. I would like to make a motion to approve item four.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so very.
Thank you.
We will move forward consent agenda items. We have items five through eight, and then fifteen through nineteen. I had a couple of comments. Item five is an inmate healthcare program for twenty-four million six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars through NAF Care. I thought that the public needed to see that we are trying to provide healthcare. We are providing healthcare for our inmates. Item number seven was accepting the first purchase orders of Hamilton County and authorizing their execution and release for the purchase orders that were done. And then I have item eight, a resolution, number six, to close a capital project and return the project advanced. That's five hundred thousand dollars. In addition, item fifteen and sixteen, we will receive for the record. And I was gonna, nobody's here for me. Maybe you can answer, Jeff, but the report of actions on item fifteen signed by the Hamilton County Director and End of Director, that acronym seems different. I've never seen a report of actions before. It's been on there before. What they signed, it was a hundred and forty thousand. Is that anything new?
No, no, I don't think it's new, but it just incorporates the different contracts that the director has the authority to sign off on. So we bring those to the board just to be approved, as we do also for the purchasing director and the administrator as well.
So is there, I mean, I'm looking at number sixteen, it's five thousand. So he needs to reset that to the board?
Yeah, so that comes to the board. That was, in some of these, that one in particular was job training related. The one for number fifteen was interpretation services and job training as well.
So are you saying that everything that he signs, basically?
The things under his authority will come in a report to the board.
And that's happened before. That's always been done that.
Yes.
Okay, so item seventeen, we have for group home services, five hundred thousand. There is amendment number three of the original single source. What was, I put a note, what is amendment allocation for?
I'm sorry, Madam President. Can you repeat the question?
Authorizing amendment number three for five hundred thousand dollars. And so what was the amendment? Was it addition to more money for group home services? It had to be an amendment to add on to the contract?
Madam President, I don't know if Laura Wolf is on the phone. I don't know whether that was just an extension or whether there is an amendment on this or not, a specific amendment of the term.
It won't stop me from voting for it, but I'll find out. And I know there's certain variables that they have to meet in order to have a second and a third amendment.
So Bridget, I don't know if Laura is on? Yeah, she's, we'll just cue Laura in here.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. This amendment is not allocating any additional dollars for the contract, Commissioner Dumas. This is adding a new site for this particular provider that it'll, this is a minority-owned group home that's located up in Dayton, and they were previously only serving girls, but they opened up a new home, and that will be serving teenage boys. That's what that amendment is for.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Not a problem.
All right. And then we have item nineteen, there are eight liquor permit applications, and there was no objection by the Sheriff Department. So are there any comments as it relates to the consent agenda items? No comments?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on number five of the NAF Care contract. So yeah, this is related to inmate healthcare, which we provide and, you know, is important. But there is a rising cost here with this contract, and I just want to note that we need to keep our eye on the increased cost as we go with any kind of provider in any situation, because I just worry that it's grown significantly, and so I just want to kind of put that out there. I haven't discussed anything with the sheriff related to the contract. I'm happy to support it. Just want to note that this increased cost is a little concerning, and we just need to keep an eye on it as we move forward. Thank you.
What's the difference?
It's, I don't know what it's up to this year, but it's significant. And if you look at the trajectory of year after year, it's going up quite a bit. And it also relates to the levies, and Lisa Webb has now gone to the mic.
Yeah, Madam President, Lisa Webb is our formerly, is now Assistant Administrator Webb has done all the work on our levies. She also worked really hard with the Sheriff's Office on this particular project to make sure that it has the services that we need, as well as trying to contain costs. Lisa, did you want to give an overview of the?
No, that's totally fine. Yeah, it is up to a five-year contract. Actually, nice, the cost for current year is actually slightly lower than last year's, but the contract does continue to have a three percent escalator. So when you think of that over a five-year period, you're looking at just under eight million dollars this year, but by the end of the next levy cycle, almost nine million dollars in inmate medical expenses just within the Justice Center. Yeah. It was three and a half in the last five-year period, so it has actually come down a little bit.
And Madam President, if I could just, I'm sorry, Vice President Reese, did you have a question?
Oh, I just was going to say, it would be helpful for me if we had a chart that I could look at that way.
Oh, sure. I can absolutely find that.
So then we could see, like you said, it's three percent.
The increasing cost.
A half percent less and those kind of things. Well.
Madam President, I was just going to say, for the public watching at home, when we talk about inmate medical, we operate a jail in Hamilton County, houses about twelve hundred inmates every single day, and a major component of what that facility does is providing medical care to the people who are in that facility. So everything from providing nurses and physicians for screening and intake and making sure those inmates have physicals within a certain amount of time that they come in, prescribing medication, operating the medical unit, administering psychotropic drugs if need be, having a contractual relationship with an off-site vendor if there's hospital care needed. It is a major operational component of what we do in criminal justice. And thus, the rationale for the large dollar value on it, I concur that it is a major driver, especially in some of our levy spending that we want to keep an eye on. But just for the public who's watching, wondering, why are we spending so much on medical care in the county? So and I do want to thank Lisa.
And I would add, as the sheriff, what I'm sure if she would hear, that the Justice Center is the largest provider of mental health services in the county.
Yeah, that's a lot of people, a lot of issues.
So I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't provide the services. In fact, I think the services, especially related to addiction, mental health are critically important to the inmates while they're in the facility. However, there are other providers, and I just want to keep an eye on this cost because it not only impacts the general fund, it also impacts the levies. And so, you know, I just want to keep an eye on this escalation. I think it's important that we not lose sight of increased costs year after year for the service, not that it's not important. I just think we need to be fiscally responsible when we think about it. Thank you.
I absolutely agree. I just want to add as well, the intelligent care levy is up for renewal this year, and a key component in that review is looking at inmate medical overall as well. NAF Care as a contractor, I believe this is their third cycle, so that would be at least ten years, two-year, or two, five-year periods at least.
I just wanted to also, I do think we've got to look at it, see if there's anything better out there. But also, beyond addiction, there are other inmates that are in there, and of course, our goal is to treat everyone in a humane way. And we see lots of lawsuits when you don't provide the medical care, or somebody, for God forbid, dies in there, and then we got a major lawsuit. So I think it's a good balance. If there's another provider, I don't know the provider or anything like that, but if there's somebody else out there that can do it less expensive, but still provide the level of care, I think that's what people are looking at. And for me, I think it would be helpful just to get the past context of what we, where we've been, where we're going, a chart so that we, and also involve the sheriff, Sheriff McGuffey involved in that conversation, too. So that's kind of where I am, and I think that's, you know, we want to have a balance. But at the same time, we do have a responsibility in operating the facility.
I will say, the contract was competitively bid, and we did have, I believe, two respondents this time, as well as last time, five years ago. And I believe the second respondent in each of those were different organizations, and in both cases, NAF Care was the lowest bidder.
Thank you.
But I can certainly provide some additional background for you on that with the Sheriff's Office.
Awesome. With no further comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve items five through eight and fifteen through nineteen.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. With nothing more coming before us, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes, thank you.